Everybody's here? Alright, good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 7th, 2nd High School Board and Chair's Special Meeting. Please rise for the flag.
Let me lead you into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By way of announcement, the public is hereby advised to be on video recording this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcast. Session reports and attendance. We're missing Mr. Ryan. Sorry, without everybody in their regular seats in the new tags. You can figure out who was missing right away. Disrespect to Mr. Ryan. So, the one matter that we have up for vote this evening is going to be presented here by Padavia. So, Dan, take the floor.
I gave them the opportunity to sit over there today, but they're just still there. Maybe I'll stand up.
Will they still... You guys have to be in the middle?
In the middle.
In order to be on camera. It's a little bit awkward, but I know you'll make it work.
This is really intimate. Maybe like the America's Most Wanted. So, we... So, let's see. Every... Whenever we have a property meeting, I don't know, did you tell anybody? Whenever we have a property meeting, we usually have... Well, again, James is the lead, and James is always kind of assembling things with some help from Don, et cetera. And then there's like a pre-property meeting, but those are the pre-property meeting conversation with Eternally, and we'll try and make sure we're all on the same page and everything's all good. And we finished that around three or so on Friday, and I got another phone call. Two people came in the office and were like really somber faces, and James had got a call right after he hung up with us that his father passed away. So, he's in Scotland. So, the combination of James being in Scotland and Mark Fresh being on vacation, we've like lost like two more, you know, critical information.
James is... So, if I could then interrupt if you don't mind, if we could, because Padavia has been, you know, our owner's rep for a number of years, and James has been that lead individual. So, if we just take, you know, put five minutes of debate respects. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And James was very close to us, so I just wanted to just leave him. Just to leave version. But in any event, naturally, you know, when we got past that, that started our quick conversations. Obviously, we have this on the agenda to prepare for. And we're good. As far as information, there's no holes in the information coming tonight, so it's not like we're missing anything, notwithstanding not having James and Mark here. Teresa and I... This is Teresa Shepherd. Teresa's the principal of Shepherd Restoration. Some of you know her. That's me. She is a special... Oh, aren't you? Rather than you said, just your own introduction.
Sure. I'm the president of Shepherd Restoration Engineers, and we specialize in building, renovation, and restoration projects. So, when situations like yours, this is what we specialize in. This is what we do. So, if you ever have any questions, you can ask Teresa and I. We did have some information to share with you today about what your options are and can answer whatever questions you may have.
And as you began, we're a professional corporation. Teresa's on the contract with the district to do some masonry work, and we've been doing the work in the district, so, you know, we had to do some backup even further. We had gone through a selection process for a design professional for that, I guess, like a year and a half ago or something like that. We had worked with Teresa before in other small districts, so that's all good. Teresa and I got on the phone Friday afternoon, and it was pretty apparent we were completely on the same page based on the circumstances. The circumstances. So, and then take me, correct me if I start going astray. Essentially, as part of the feasibility assessment work, we've been doing restorative work on the masonry area. In particular, to this building, the capstone on top of the roof, the paraplu wall on top of the roof, it's actually photographed on the third page of the handout. That capstone is on top of the wall. So, as part of that restoration work, those capstones were being removed because I guess there was some mortar that was missing.
Correct.
So, it was part of the work. And once the capstone was removed... There's a photograph of this. Once the capstone removal was removed, the condition that was immediately observed was the first photograph in the site visit report that was generated by one of Teresa's people. And essentially, if you look at that photo... If you look at the photo, essentially, and maybe it's even better to look at the main photo. Once you took the capstone off of the top, the panel system was essentially held up by these clips, which were barely engaging the panel. They were basically an L-shaped clip that was sitting on top of the panel. And the panel in this case, there are these four-inch concrete panels. They're massive. They're four-inch concrete panels. And today's, even in maybe back then, we would not be installing typically.
No. Typical panel would be an inch and a half to three inches. And so, these were oversized when we were preparing these.
And again, from a structural standpoint, I'm...
That's one question to clarify.
So, please ask questions.
This is the back of the panel that we see on the front.
That's behind it.
That's behind it. So, this is what's right behind it.
Yeah. If you look at the photo, it looks like there's... It almost looks like there's like little vents in the panel.
Yep.
Those are the surgical holes made, so those bigger cuts made in order to do that. That's the game of work, doesn't it? Yeah, please ask questions if there's... If you have any questions as we go along. That's Teresa.
Okay. No, and just I just wanted to further explain that when we found that there was an issue, we looked in the original construction documentation, which we have copies of, and found that the architectural drawings differed from what the structural drawings did. Typically, the structure is built per the structural drawings, and then the sod elements are built according to the architectural drawings. However, in this case, the structural drawings were not followed, even though they were actually built at... They were noted and stamped as as-built, which meant that they're supposed to reflect what the existing conditions. Structural is called out for a six-inch fully grounded and reinforced wall. And what we found was built was an eight-inch CMU block wall that was not fully grounded.
This is the wall behind the panel.
This is the support wall behind the panel.
But the panels are here.
Correct. So then, so then what happened is that there's a two-inch airspace between the block and the back of the concrete panel. There's no waterproofing on that at all. And there's no vapor barrier, and there's nothing there. So, then you have the four-inch capstone panel, which is excessive for what it is. Typically, for a veneer panel, they range between inch and a half and three inches. And the connectors that are prefabricated by companies that specialize in these types of connections base their connections off of this typical range of panel sizes. So, when we pulled things apart, and we were able to take out those strips of bricks, those bricks that you see in the picture, they are just mortar laid. And with the way the whole veneer system was constructed, they basically just stacked it. There were no pins between one panel and the next because we had a brick course, and there were no pins in any of the areas that we opened up. So, it was just a stacked panel. And just to give you an idea, the heaviest panel, which is put at the top, they're about 1,980 pounds for one panel. They're roughly four foot six by eight foot something. So, at four inches thick, roughly 150 pounds per cubic foot. So, all the heaviest panels are on the top. By the way, the architect had sized these, and they stack on top of each other. So, they all basically come down to support on the steel lintel at the window or on the header that's at the doorway. So, and then, so there's no other intermediate structural support for these panels, which is not appropriate. It's not... It's just not correct. I don't know why they would have done it that way. So, it was really purely the bond of the mortar in addition to what minimal ties that have not corroded that are holding those panels in. So that in terms of gravity load support, they're just stacked on one another. But in terms of lateral load support, have very little support. So that if there were, you know, kind of an earthquake or something, you probably would have seen some significant movement because they were not tied back laterally as is required. So, because most of the panels, you'll see in the photographs, the connections are rusted. So, the fasteners that go into the block are missing, corroded, or not engaged. So, all conditions which don't help support the panels laterally. And there are no relieving angles. Normally, there would be a support angle or sections of support angles underneath these panels, and they don't exist either. So, there are a number of issues with what's currently built. And what you see is if you look closely, you'll see that these panels are shifting. They might be tilting a little bit this way, or might be coming out a little bit this way, but there's obvious movement in the panel. They're not cracking. Panels aren't compromised themselves, it's just the connections on the panels.
Can I ask if we know who did this construction and when?
Well, obviously, we weren't involved, but the buildings... The drawings are stamped date 2003, and I'm sure in the district archives, there might be some information of who was involved at that time.
Don was there when the capstone was taken off. And this photograph was an example... This is actually the backside of one of those L-shaped clips that had just come off. So, it just shows that there was a washer behind it that corroded, and it literally was separated from the wall. Any questions about the condition?
Was there any visual evidence of the shifting, or was this all just discovered in the course of the masonry work that we were doing?
Well, in doing the facade repair program, you could see that there was some cracking in the mortar, but it just looked like it was cracked mortar that needed to be repaired because, again, it's over 15 years old, and that's not uncommon. When you have very thin mortar joints between two... They're not... I want to say dissimilar materials, but you have large panels and small bricks. So, they move at different rates. So, oftentimes, you'll find some areas like that to have cracks. So, other than that, we wouldn't have known. And sometimes panels can be offset because maybe they're not set exactly plumb during construction. So, it really wasn't until the contractors up there on the lift to be able to see, take off that capstone, and look down in the wall, and then he could observe that these ties were not engaged.
For the reason why we got the picture of the roof, as you can see, it's obviously six inches from the face of the concrete block to the outside, a two-inch air gap plus the four-inch panel.
It's typical metallurgy for these fasteners. Are they galvanized steel or are they stainless?
Usually stainless. And that's...
Do you use galvanite? We usually do stainless.
And that's the day they closed the entrance and work. That's why we're here now.
Correct. Okay. That brings you to...
The entrance has been closed.
Yes, it's right. Thank you for your quickness on that.
And because this is all facade, it doesn't deal with the actual structure of the building?
Correct.
However, one of the concerns with the choice solution that you solution we choose is that it requires the concrete block behind it to be grounded properly. And in doing this pro work, it was determined that it was kind of sporadically grounded.
Correct. The contractor was able to drill through the block on the roof side just to randomly determine how many of these cores were filled because of the difference in what the architectural drawings said and what the structural drawings said. And it appears as though there's no real consistency. In locations where structurally I would anticipate, and it would require having grounded cores where the reinforcement comes up from the roof and comes up into the wall vertically, you could see on the structural drawings. And on the architectural drawings, where there's a dowel, and then there's a vertical bar in the bottom of the block wall, those cores should most definitely be filled, along with every core where there's a reinforcement bar. And then apparently, the contractor found that that was not the case. So, that brings up a question of options on reattachment. So, anything that we would do to reattach the panels would require full-blown grout filling of the concrete cores in the block. So, that's just another step that we're...
Again, any questions about the condition as it is? Would you like to use that microphone?
Yes.
We'd like to invest or do it that way. Because we have the... I'm kind of excited. We have the opportunity to take...
You're the only one that's excited for you.
Yeah. Well, with the property, it's really exciting.
The same part is we go through building... We go through building and property, and it's like all mechanical, or, you know, basically it's not exciting and sexy. We had that conversation. This is even worse. It's just like...
But we include...
It's more suspenseful.
We include the cross-sections in the field report. You have it on the page. Of the field report. The left diagram is the architectural. I know it's a little bit small in this, but... And the right diagram is the structural. And so, in this particular case, there between the design professionals, there was obviously some clear line drawn between what the structural responsibility was and what the architectural responsibility was.
But we have the opportunity now that we're gonna have to make a decision on where it should perform. So, what we don't have is a handout of... We have the information, we just don't have the handout of the cost for the two options. It's basically two options.
Okay. I mean, I can write it out.
I'll draw. You can talk, and I'll draw. I like doodle. So, in a nutshell, the two options, in a nutshell.
Well, I want to... We want to start just with number one, is that currently, we have pedestrian protection, and the contractor did probes. So, there was a cost associated with that. So, from a contractor's standpoint, the estimated cost for that was in the range of $5,000. Pedestrian protection, that's up, and the probes that he already conducted.
But Teresa, generally, we have two main options. One is two realistic options. One's remove and replace. And then the other is remove and replace with something else.
Well, one is remove and reinstall.
I'm sorry. Keep going. I'll keep up with you.
Okay. So, above that, you have the $5,000 for the existing pedestrian protection and the executed probes.
Teresa, can you repeat that?
Right. So, above that, we have the $5,000 for the pedestrian protection.
That's just temporary, take us to today.
That's right. That brought us to today.
That's done. There's no to say it was done.
Right. Okay. So, in the option one, which is essentially rebuilding it with the materials that you have, the four-inch cast stone panels and the brick. But what we would do is we're adding in the waterproofing, we're adding in proper flashing, adding in structural steel angles that are... Will take the weight of the panels and the proper lateral connections, the clips that tie it back to the CMU wall, grounding the wall as needed. And at the end of the day, it looks almost identical to what it looks like today instead.
And we're waterproofing in that scenario too?
Yes.
Okay.
Of course, the letters have to be... The letters that spell out Mathacton High School have to be removed. They're like dowelled in, so they have to be cut off and then reinstalled. And that's included as well. And the contractor gave us a price of $149,158. Now, these are all contracted costs that we're talking.
And we'll do schedule. After we do cost, we'll do schedule.
Yes. The other option would be to take the panels down, put them in a dumpster, and waterproof it, and then you go back with a much lighter facade material. We priced out metal panel because it's, you know, larger units, quicker installation. And we can get them in the colors, same colors that you have generally now, so that we're not going crazy with a major aesthetic change.
Well, we could change it if we wanted to.
Yes, there's lots of flexibility.
No cost, just...
Just to make things simple at the moment. So, the cost would include demolition of the panels. So, demolish the panels and put them in the dumpster. That is $23,415. Waterproofing is $5,000. We have a range for the metal panels because it will depend on what panel you select, the size of the panel. But if we go with the overall sizing that we have, it runs in the range of $55 to $75 per square foot installed, as procured and installed. And that is in the range of $82,500 to $112,500. So, they're the two options that we have. Now, not to say that any of this is set in stone, but this is... This is... The only third option you would have would be to say you not do anything, and we temporarily put up some long-term temporary stabilization that'll give you more time. And that comes at a cost of $16,880.
And for that scenario, that's just buying us time until we can come up with...
That's just buying you time, and you end up with a facade that's obviously stabilized or have the network of two-by-tens and cables that will support, tie the panel to the wall so that it doesn't... Then it would be safe, and you could open up the entrance while you make a decision. But these are just... These are really the three paths that you could take.
So, quickly, if I did my math, one and two is about $9,000 difference at the worst case, at the 112.
On the worst case.
It's a $9,000 difference.
Right.
And...
But if we can... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. The metal panels eventually would match or be more matched to the canopies that we're planning on doing in the future?
Yes, they can be. Yes. Absolutely.
What would be the life expectancy of both of these options?
On the option one, rebuilding it, you would... The panels are... And the connections are good for probably the life of the building. You will end up always having to repoint every 15 years, maybe every 10 years, but in that range. But other than that, there is no other real maintenance involved, other than cleaning or no other real costs involved with that. On the metal panel side, it will all be new installation, new material, so you'll have a warranty on that. Usually, they're in the range of 15 to 20 years. Then, in terms of maintenance, you may just have some seals to do, some coffee. Other than that, it's fairly minimal as well.
And the script?
Right. So, I spoke with the contractor today. This is Robert Michaels, who's been working on the building. And for option one, he would be prepared to start Wednesday the ninth, September 21st. And he would end roughly November 3rd. And the entrance would be... What he was saying that he could do is that at the busy times, when the kids would go in, they could go in, but then the area would be closed during the day. So, he could work in it. So, he would stop work at the busy times when you have larger numbers of people coming in that way. Then on the option two, he would start on Wednesday, October 9th. And he would be completed on October 13th, so that the entry would be open on the 14th. And this is just... What this is, is remove all of the big panels, put them in the dumpster, waterproof it. But then you can remove the temporary pedestrian protection until the panels are, you know, everything's designed, approved, fabricated, and then installed. Because I don't imagine the installation would be very long. It's not a very large area. The installation may take a week or so.
The metal panels would come later.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
October 19th to the 13th is just the demolition.
Correct.
And we get it ready.
Teresa, what's the prospect of delivery?
That I don't know. It depends on... It depends on the material. So, I would imagine it might be in one.
And what about Mathacton High School? I would imagine with option two, you said option one, you keep these same letters.
He would cut them off and put them back.
And what about with option two?
We may be able to reuse the letters. Maybe they have to mount them on something that gets attached to the...
I realize it's not a big deal, but it might be $5,000. So, that's why I'm asking. I realize that's minor, but it's $5,000. That's why I'm asking the question.
Right. We'd have to ask that specific contractor about how he might approach that.
Teresa, I don't mean to take you backwards, but in talking about the longevity of the panels, I heard your answer about the metal panels, maybe 20 years on the metal panels. Is that the finish only? The panel should last longer, but the finish would need to be refinished?
Well, usually, it's... Usually, that's on the finish. Typically, contractors will warrant their work for anywhere between one year to three years. But there's a manufacturer's warranty on the finish of the metal panels, so that we have that.
Versus the existing concrete panels? You may have said this, and I was... Life expectancy on the concrete panels based on where we are now?
Well, I expect them to last.
Definitely.
The only difference would be...
So, maybe that weighs into the decision.
Right. The only difference would be if you decide to coat them, then coatings usually have to be reapplied maybe every eight to 10 years.
With the metal panels, are they anything like my lovely shutters on my house that fade and look horrendous?
It's much better. It's a commercial quality. Usually, they have a fine art finish.
Given that the thickness of the panel is exceeding industry standards, it's a typical... Is there going to be an issue with finding the right kind of connectors and everything you need to make this? When you're dealing with non-typical, non-expected construction materials, I'm just wondering if this is the kind of thing that there could be other problems that we're just not seeing?
Uh, no. The connectors that we've specified are available in the length that you need.
So, I just want to take you back because I was thinking the same thing, because we talked about this earlier. You're comfortable, like this could be structural, like you could... We could remove it?
Yeah, we have it designed.
Yeah.
And it's ready for permitting.
It's not speculation.
It's not speculation.
No, I guess I'm just...
I was thinking the same thing.
Availability of materials and all that stuff.
Right. It takes a little extra time because the steel will need to be galvanized, and that's just a shop process. They have to be sent to a special shop to perform the galvanizing on the steel. And when we buy the pieces from a shop, they're already galvanized. But then we have to cut holes in them to put the dowels and the pins in so we can pin the panels, and then they have to be touched up. So, it's a little more involved in the process, and that's why the lead time is longer. That one also requires a crane not only to carefully grab these panels and lower them to the ground safely, but you need the crane to also reinstall them. So, there's a crane on site for that period of time as well. And the metal panels don't require a crane. Much lighter, more easily handled.
I'm gonna push you up. Sorry. Go ahead.
That was it. Just too quick. Strong comments. And from a... You talk more about the weight bearing. Now, this is sitting up on the doorways, but the door headers, there's no issues there?
No, no. I think that's the way the load pads work.
Okay. And the second question is, this cavity in the back, we've had, are there any issues? Are there any... Have you seen any issues with moisture, rust in this cavity, the way it is now? Like the fact that we're talking about waterproofing as a precautionary...
Well, it should have been there in the first place. That's industry standard.
And maybe I've got it wrong.
We were not... Nobody reported to us if there were any leaks inside the building on the backside of that wall. Now, the majority of it is... Now, the majority of it is, is above the roof, but there is a portion of it that is below the roof.
Structurally, built the wall behind that would need to be redone for option one, that would not need to be, would that need to be also structurally shorted for option two or not because it's lighter material?
Uh, correct, right, and it's, it's really just more of just filling the cores. Structurally, we're not rebuilding the wall or doing anything like that, we're just filling the cores.
Okay.
That would need to be filled where the anchors would fall.
Okay.
So for, because they have to, they have to, they, when they put the anchors in, they'll, they'll determine whether the core is grounded. And then you get more capacity, then you install an anchoring to it.
We spoke originally on Friday, this was like the easier, obvious solution to go in this direction on, on first blush. But, but there is, there is a, you know, a cost benefit analysis to consider with the two, when we discuss this number, I mean, your, your question about, you know, does the existing wall support was being done? You included, working, we didn't get the contractor price on Friday afternoon, I think, because when we got the price. There's some allowance in there to do some removal work to the existing, the existing wall, correct?
Correct.
So there, there was some anticipate, you know, we think about that too when you make a decision, which one is gonna, you know, potentially leaked on for seeing conditions? You know, this one seems to be pretty straightforward. This one, and what's the chance, Teresa, and you're, again, I'm putting you on the spot constantly, what's your, what's your, in your opinion, what's the chance of the panel breaking and, and the removal of the panel?
It can, it can happen, it could, accidents happen. It's a, you know, it's, it's a four-inch thick concrete slab, which is essentially what you have on the sidewalk, that thickness. It is reinforced, so that gives it some additional structure. But accidents do happen, so, you know, if, if a panel were to crack, they would have to, they can pin it, we can epoxy it, you can repair it, but it wouldn't be able to be repaired such that you would never see it. If there was some, something that happened, it, we can, we always do concrete repair, but it's very difficult to make it visible and it would, it would probably require then you to coat the, the entire facade of this entry area. Now, there's no coating included in that level.
So are there, um, materials for replacing the facade other than metal, which you quoted us?
Uh, in the, in the time that we had, we could just have the metal panel quote, which is why there's a range, because there's a, there really is a pretty expansive selection of panel systems that you can choose from. So that's where the range comes in. But other materials could be, you could go with a, you could go with a thinner cast iron panel. You could go with, I mean, other options may not really be an option, but you can always use like a hardy plank type system. You could come up with other things, but, but things that are more in keeping with the architectural style of what you have, I think, and, and the work that you're planning to do with the canopies, I think would be either a stone replacement or maybe a metal panel.
We talked about ongoing maintenance costs, um, we talked about, uh, you know, the finish being on the warranty for fifteen, twenty years. At that point, right, so the finish starts to degrade, what are we talking about in terms of?
Well, typically at that point, you would already have, you already have the base, I'll say the base structural system installed, so you're really just replacing your panels. And so it's a lesser expense of cost than doing a full-blown install because, because you're putting up all the, the legage structure behind it that you anchored to the block and then, then apply the panels to.
Okay, but that, alright.
But it is something we think about.
It wouldn't be the fifteen, fifty-five to seventy-five per square?
No, I would imagine it would be less.
Is it, is it like seventy-five percent of it or is it more like thirty-three, like a third of it, is it fifty? I'm just, in a ballpark, because it doesn't make a difference.
We'll say fifty to seventy-five percent of the, of the install.
And that's, that's my question, because if we, and I, I just want to look at my long-term expenses.
It depends, it depends on the system and it depends on how the, how the selected system is connected and installed.
Sure.
So the progression of pieces and how they're installed, whether they can even be removed. I think in most, those systems, they can probably fairly easily.
But we could be looking at essentially in another couple of years, spend another fifty thousand dollars, say, for new panels versus us putting the same thing back up, which may be repointing or even if it is, you know, coating at that point. Which might be not, I don't know, twenty, thirty, that options are not as nice too.
So what is the extra wall lines, are they just flat concrete block, concrete block? Some grounded, some not. Teresa, is there any logic, we talked about, is there any logic in leaving the, the two lower courses of panel, anyone mental about that?
Well, I know it's, it's always been Mark's concern, as is with almost all schools, all buildings where they have lawn mowers coming up and weed whackers coming up to the bottom edge of the building, is that that material is a much more substantial, harder material, so that was where that came from, that we would, we would keep the lower panels down top. Now, of course, for the, for the reconstruction effort, there was no real need to take them off, because they're already, they're bearing down on the brick, on the concrete ledge. So they're gonna get clipped back, but they, they don't need to be removed. There's no fall hazard with this.
But from a design standpoint, is that a possible solution? Kind of a, it's a tiny hybrid to leave, attach, properly attach the lower two panels, leave them there, first for their durability, and go mental about that?
Oh, yes, that, that's an option, not, you're not saving a tremendous amount, but yes, that is an option.
This might be a difficult question, something I'll ask my medical doctor when they give you two options, what would you choose?
Right.
And they always go, well, they don't want to tell me for whatever reason, but that, what would you?
That is true.
Uh, they always sit and think about it.
Now, you're right, you're right.
But I'm gonna still ask it, what would you choose?
I'll be honest, I say, it is hard for me to say, and I always say this, only because, um, you know, if, I, I can, there's a technical answer and then there's an owner. So, you know, it's, it's, if you had any interest at all in modifying the aesthetic in the front of the building, you could look at this as an opportunity. It does, it's a lighter weight material, it doesn't have a tremendous amount of maintenance, and neither does the, the reinstillation of the panel. A lot can go wrong with reinstillation of the panels, like for instance, if your, the panels are broken, then you're, you're looking at either having a new one to replace it, which could take months to replace. Because any, you know, there can always happen accidents, not that that would cost you anything, it's just time and inconvenience. So, I, I, I think either one is a, is a viable option. I, I, I do truly, honestly feel that way, and I wouldn't propose it, I guess, if it, if it were.
Teresa, could you speak to us about the first option? And your comment about how we would allow students in and out of the building during this timeframe? When, so my assumption then would be if that's the case, you would take all of the block down first?
Absolutely.
Waterproof, and they would let them in and out, you know, during that time, once the block's gonna move? And then, once the block is going back up, um, you're not, you're not gonna let them in and out, I mean?
Well, the nice thing about the way we have it, unlike the way they installed it, the way we have it designed, is that they can, they can work from one corner of the building and work around to the other side. So that while they're doing work, and, and this is what the contractor was explaining to me, but he, I don't want to put words in his mouth, because he's, he's the one that coordinates all the mobilization and, and all that work, and he works closely with the school, so just to, you know, to handle the case.
Have a crane to take stuff down, put stuff up and, and, and front, you know, students, here we typically evacuate areas of the building when we have cranes in the front.
So he'll, he'll do whatever he feels is the appropriate procedure.
So Mike, do you have any recommendation?
Yeah, you know, so originally how this transpired is obviously we had the, we got notified of the issue when we closed the, as, as we should have closed things down, notified, I thought we handled all that well with Dr. Seidman, you know, had a, had a plan to, to, you know, address it. We were thinking, at least my conversation with Mr. Fredson initially on, this might be, you know, a fifty thousand dollar matter. So when Friday came and we got one hundred and forty-nine thousand, but option one was the first one that was provided to us, I basically said no. I mean, I don't know how, you know, to, to take all these issues, what other options are there? But at the time, I didn't know what the, what option two would cost us, knowing that, A, there's all, all the potential issues associated with taking the block down and putting the block up, why would we? Doesn't make, didn't make sense to me to take the effort to put something up that probably should have been there in the first place and put, and put that back up. But I didn't have these numbers with me, so I'm still at that belief that, you know, while, while we might have some other long-term cost, you know, ten, fifteen years down the road with the metal panels, we have, we have A, an immediate opportunity to get those entrances open, which is, it's the greatest safety hazard. While we were cleared with the, uh, the fire chief, you know, we need to get these things, to get this doorway open sooner rather than later, especially with the winter season, uh, you know, upon us. I just, I, it just doesn't make sense to me, for how close the, the dollars are, to put a panel up that shouldn't have been there in the first place. And so, you know, Mark and I have favored the, the second option, but that was without the cost factor, so if you can all come up with that.
Well, it's possible, I mean, my view of this is either option you've got, the first two options you gotta do.
Yes.
Remove and work through. Are there other options, Mike, of, other than the eighty-two to one hundred and twelve thousand that could be looked at? And just take an interim step now, do those first two things, get those two tons of stones off the side of the building. And then invite whatever options, it's just a flat concrete cinder blocks and that block wall. Can you do some of these, maybe, we're running stats exactly.
Yeah.
So can you do like a fake stone or fake brick or something, I don't know, to try to trim that cross? Because, and then, I mean, because I understand, I don't know about the bidding process on this, I guess with the being a urgency that it gives you.
We're, we're not necessarily gonna do that in, in term, in terms of, of, of replacement?
Or even like getting quotes on some other options, I don't know how much the eighty-two to one twelve is labor or some materials, but can you get?
Yeah, we can get quotes.
Can you get quotes to try to, you know, get that pricing? But it, either way, no matter what, I think you decide, you gotta incur those first two layers. Removing the stones, whether you put them back up or not, that's to be decided, but.
I, I agree with you, because the, 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 the option was, after I heard the one forty-nine, was a sixteen thousand dollar option to secure the block to the building. And I said, basically, why would we spend sixteen thousand dollars when we know it's gonna cost us about twenty-two if we're moving it? So.
I agree with Brian, because I don't really know if I really want the metal look I want, I don't think that would really go with the building. So I'd rather look at options that mimic this look.
Sure.
At a cheaper price.
Maybe we can put the canopies in there together and get like a bulk rate.
That'd just look nice, I agree with you, and make it durable.
The only thing I would suggest that you stay away from is a, like, a dry bit or a piece of material, only because in recent years, insurance companies have, you don't like to see that on the buildings, and they can, they can give you a hard time.
But I guess, you know, from what Mr. Enchance said, I mean, that was part of, you know, an earlier conversation today in terms of, you know, we get the removal done, get student access in and out, and then, you know, charge Shepherd with coming up with the options for the replacement. Some maybe still, metal panels being one of them, but the only thing that would be a part of it is the replacement of the existing system. Because once it's down, it's not, I don't know where we're gonna store it.
I don't know why you put.
That bad.
I'm just two tons.
And we won't need the crane because we're not putting it back.
But I wanted to be, I wanted to be, you know, clear that, you know, I don't know what else would look exactly like what's up there, but, but it does buy us time to look at more options that forces him to, you know, another couple hundred thousand dollars, but we, we don't need to do that today. But, but likely, we would probably recommend, uh, removal, waterproofing, and then asking you to come up with a design and come back to the property committee, and we take it through a normal channel, go over bids and all that kind of stuff, whatever.
You're in quarantine on time. So just out of curiosity, so when this is done, and it's, like, you know, when your homes are in the middle of being done and there's Tyvek, you know, what will it look, you know, you see the Tyvek, and I don't, I mean, it is what it is, if we're fixing it, I'm just curious what it's going to look like in the meantime for these couple of months, and I don't really mind either way, but you know, somebody will, so I'd like to know what it's gonna look like.
Well, I, I, mostly what it's, it's gonna look like is the block is going to have a liquid fine waterproofing membrane, membrane or just typically black. And then you put flashing around windows, which depending on the product, is either black or blue, similar to the blue color inside, something like that. So, and then, um, and then steel, I don't know that there would be any plastic that would be out there, so I think it would be more, more just with waterproofing membrane and the, and the amber flash.
Maybe you could get green flashing.
Teresa, in these courses, if you're talking about here, just picture us, right? As we talk about demolition, are we talking about demolition of the entire facade then, or only down to a certain, uh, level?
Well, the, the quote for the one forty-nine is taking it down to, it's a little hard to see, the equipment in the way, but there are two small panels, two, two levels of small panels down, I'll say up to about this height.
Yeah.
Uh, on the, on the sides, so they would remain and then everything else would go up. But if they don't have, I mean, they can very easily be removed at a later, at a later time, or you can remove them now, we just didn't want to, you know, expose the, take out more than what was, what was absolutely necessary. And if you wanted to maintain that some tie of the same material as to what's on the headers of the windows, but that's not necessarily required here.
So right, I were gonna say, but I, 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 those that have said, they approved the twenty-eight thousand four fifteen, figure out how we can do better to reach two thousand. And there's also an opportunity too, with what we're talking about, the penny bill, what we're talking about at our head, if we were to tie in some of these things through a design perspective.
I'll be able to maintain lighting for some of the buildings while this is being done?
Oh, you mean during the course of the work?
Well, after it's all.
Like when we, when we have the, the black car and the blue flashing on?
Oh, right.
When we still have lighting there?
Uh, I, I guess that's to be determined, because they're gonna have to remove them just to get the panel out, because they're drilled through the panel.
And we're gonna have to put some temporary lighting.
Right, and then you put some temporary lighting or reinstall the lighting, whatever you prefer.
And what's our timing, no matter what we decide, Brian brought up a good point just with me right here, like, okay, it's not gonna look very pretty for a while, understood, um, but he brought up graduation, like, a lot of people are taking.
I'm trying to take picture in front of the building.
Yeah, I don't know, is, is that, like, if we get on this and we know further, is June, I mean.
Not the most important thing.
Well, I, but no, no.
Don't rush it.
What I'm asking is if we delay it or we're not talking, if we're talking February, March, April being realistic? Because it is already October, June will be here before we go in.
And this is not.
Fast everything moves around here.
Other than.
Turtle speed.
Other than severe rainstorms, severe windstorms and snowstorms, uh, you can, if you, if you don't have a, I'll say, and if you're not laying brick, then you can do it more in all weather. So if you're, if you were to decide that we want to go back with some kind of a glazed brick or something that is of the same color, which could be an option, then, then you're limited to weather when you install that. So you're typically forty degrees and highs, which we're, we're narrowing in on that window.
So would it be reasonable to say that if, if this evening, if, if the board decided to move forward with removal, waterproofing, and to engage you with some, some solutions, do you think by November, you could be in front of the board with a, with a property committee recommendation?
Sure, we could certainly have options for you. Sure, we definitely have options for you.
Does that, I mean, that way, you know, depending on the weather, we have some, you know, Decembers that are pretty nice out. Work could probably be given done in some kind of fashion over the next couple of months prior to maybe the spring.
And again, if you wanted to, even in terms of opportunity for various options, we can give you options that look, look almost aesthetically like that, and then deviate a little bit away from that and see how you might like the size of it.
Yeah, I think we'll probably want to see something like that. I think, and just comment about doing something that might match these canopies. I'm worried, I'm worried if you think about, right, looking at the front of the school, right, just to the left of it is where the auditorium entrance is. They're talking about adding a canopy there. That's probably an option. And I think we also want to just consider what we're doing, otherwise we're going to lose the door. Whether that ties in or not. If the canopy grade is not, that's okay too, but it's always considerable.
So we just need to know what your meeting schedule is from the auditorium back?
So I'm just going to make a statement here in terms of the, while the board certainly addressed this, there's a lot of discussion here, but, look, I guess the agenda item then, unless anyone disagrees, would be, as it stands here, with the cost in the box of $28,415.
That's the contractor's cost.
Decide, is that okay?
That's contractor's.
So we have to add some cost off 10%?
So there's more than 2, that's the 28,415?
That's the contractor's cost.
Okay.
And not our cost.
Okay. For the removal part?
Because we've been, we've been working on this, we did design that. So we have a certain amount of costs already been expended.
It wasn't, but would be paid in a lot of ways.
Right, that's correct, that's what I'm trying. Yeah, the motion that we have, or the motion that we will have would be for Robert Michaels and Associates.
I had a separate one, just for discussion. Authorized SRE to design a replacement panel system, including presenting appropriate concepts for district approval and not to exceed value of, I'm guessing, based on conversation that you have on the walls, that would kind of be an all-in number for the concepts and everything to get you to completion.
My concern too is removal. I'm almost wanting to see it removed in the two bottom ones also, because you want that foundation to be waterproofed as a whole, and then... So I don't know if that cost is based on everything minus the two of that 23...
Oh, it's the whole thing?
The whole thing, was it?
I believe that he was...
I just think he was being there, because you have the difference of width outside of it, and then putting a thinner material.
Right. I think he was leaving it just to, like I was saying about having a hard, solid surface for the lawnmowers, because you're still going to have to mow the lawn, take care of that in the interim, so that you're not chewing up the waterproofing that would go down. You can add waterproofing to the bottom of it and overlap it, so you can do that. But we could have him remove it if you feel that you want to...
So you're saying the 2300 does not include the lower courses here?
And if in the course of the design, where you decide that you don't want to keep it, then you know... And they're small, they don't require a crane, they're much smaller, much, much smaller.
It's not just...
You just want to damage the water.
So from a practical standpoint, if this was the direction, we can leave the lower two courses for now, or whatever work would be part of the eventual solution that could be done in that big package, you know, the two, removing the start of the two courses.
So does that $8,500 cover everything for you as of right now, or...
That's, that's...
That's, okay.
Is there any, I wasn't trying to force you into that.
Well, I haven't looked to see, we just literally just talked about this Friday afternoon, so... I have to double check and see where we are with what we've already expended to get everything to this point. And then, but I think we are, we are in good shape with that number to see the rest of it through, see the whole metal panels. I don't want to say what we have, like, honestly, I haven't looked at the time shifts, everybody just submitted.
Can I just suggest that, I mean, can I just leave her piece of this out until the works end, until the actual work begins as well? That we should... She can... Well, with that number based, which you might or might not know.
So, well, the question then is, A, if we approve this tonight, is there anything that you would need to do in order to make sure that this happens? Is there any engineering that takes place? Or is it just a matter of telling the contractor, remove the stuff, waterproof it, and you're done?
Yeah, yeah. He may want a detail, put detail or something around where the windows are to waterproof it, but other than that, it's a huge amount. So I guess what I'm saying is that, I mean, if it's, why don't we do this? What if we were to say that if you put a number in for SRE, say $10,000, that covers what we already have, and then what we have yet to do to get the metal panel system?
So a number not to exceed $10,000?
Right. I think I see it. I don't know what the presentations and meetings and whatnot, I think that's... Because we'll be in front of you and developing the rendered options, tiered options.
So only I can get my mind straight, it's just not doing... Are there any other questions for Teresa or Dan related to the panel for us to see? Thank you, everyone, for being, you know, patient and walking through this.
All right, so thank you both through your presentation. I'm lending her agenda, I guess, there. Thank you. So at this time, we will take public comment on board action. It looks like we will now have two board actions. One being the change of Robert Michaels and Associates, and the other being for SRE. So if there's public comment on this board action, Mr. Andrews?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Andrews, you need to stand in the middle so that you can be on camera.
That's good for the goose.
John Andrews, Law of Providence. I guess one thing that wasn't stated is the lateral dimensions of this repair job. Is it 20 feet or 200 feet, or you have a rough number?
The area...
Are you looking for the square footage of the working block?
No, no, I'm looking for the lateral dimension. I have a handle on the height.
The length, yeah. The front facade of the area we're talking about is 44 feet, 4 inches, and the returns are 6 feet. And the total height of that facade is 27 feet, 10 inches.
All right, thank you. I guess, listening to the entire conversation, where I thought that this meeting might be a 10-minute meeting, and I got the price, the way Teresa spoke, it seems to me that the simple thing is to take off and fix and then replace, rather than go with the alternate panels. And they appear to have a schedule going out to early November for that. And I don't see a big difference in price. Save $10,000 and have it extend out until next May, for instance, doesn't make sense to me. So it's unfortunate that we again have a situation like at Eagleville, where the contractor didn't have anyone monitoring his work. When you're putting up buildings over a few years, and they're not being done to design, we see what the long-term effect of shortcuts are. That's unfortunate. Thank you.
What else? So with that, I will take a motion to approve Robert Michaels and Associates of Richmore, Pennsylvania, to carry out removal of existing concrete panels and provide temporary weatherization of recent ground surface at a cost of $28,415. Ms. Reese, and a second, Mr. Harnsholm, and comments from the board on this item. See that all is in favor? Motion carries, eight to zero. And may I have a motion to approve Shepherd restoration and repairs to design a replacement panel system, including presenting appropriate concepts for district approval and not to exceed value of $10,000. Ms. Reese, and a second, Ms. Hall, and comments from the board on this item. All is in favor? Motion carries as well, eight to zero. Thank you. That was a great conversation that we had, and I appreciate all the input getting us to a place that maybe wasn't where we all hope we were. So at this point, we will take courtesy of the floor. And may I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Reese, and a second, Mr. Roman, adjourn. Thank you.